Okay, Kathy, if you can, since my vice chair is not here.
Sure. Eileen Alberts. Gladys Cooper. Mike Ferguson.
Here.
Rich Hawley. Rich Genelli. Pat Johnson. Frederick Carr. Dave Matrigna.
Here.
Ralph Federfussa.
Present.
And Holly Robinson. Here. One, two, three, four, five.
Is Mr. Ingersoll here?
No.
Okay. I want to, first actually, I want to publicly recognize, I want to recognize Eileen Alberts. She's saying thank you for serving as chair for the last three years and thank you for your service. We appreciate it. I'm finding that out soon enough. So, Mr. Ingersoll is traveling. I just wanted to publicly thank him for the donation of fifteen laptops to Rogers Park Middle School and fifteen laptops to Robert Middle School. He's been doing this for a number of years and I just wanted to thank him for his continued support. That's him. Public participation.
Nobody signed up?
Oh, nobody signed up? Okay. There's anyone that would like to speak in the audience of public participation? Okay, moving right along. The consent calendar.
That the Board of Education approves the items on the consent calendar at exhibit seventeen dash zero one through seventeen dash zero four as recommended.
Second by Michael Ferguson. Is there any discussion? See, now I'll try and mine's all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. That's it? Uh, first of all, okay. Okay. Yeah, is that a motion? Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Accept the donation of thirty laptops from Ingersoll Auto of Danbury, fifteen for Rogers Park Middle School and fifteen for Danbury High School.
Seconded by Ms. Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Great, thank you. Are there any employee representatives here who would like to speak? Student representatives, just state your name and what school you're from.
Is it on, Mr. Martino?
Um, oh, hi. I'm Ally Movera from Danbury High School.
And Monique DeLupo from Danbury High School. And Deanne Hernandez for representing ACE. Currently at Danbury High School, construction is going very well. The noise has been minimal and there are occasionally rumbles in the building, but overall going very well.
Bumbles?
Yeah. Sometimes we're sitting here in classes and the building is like shaking.
Nothing's fallen off the ceiling.
First semester is coming to a close on January twenty-fifth and we have had no snow days yet. One of our school goals was to get a hundred percent of seniors to apply to college, just under seventy percent applied and over eighty percent have filled out applications. We begin making classes online March sixth. This is something new, we are trying with the electronic registration. Also on that date, there will be spring conferences and all of our academic and elective departments will be at the school in the hallways and cafeteria for kids and parents to see what we have to offer. BOG, Board Governors, held in an ugly sweater contest, staff and students participated to kick off the holiday break. Winners received gift cards to David Mann and our Harris Cafe.
Just because, you went pretty fast, thank you. But I think the board should hear, for the first time, we're doing on-site registration, not course selection, which the youngsters will be able to get their schedules back and do a lot of that much more efficiently. So, we piloted last year and it went really well, so we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Good evening. I hope you're ready to hear, because I have a long list to finish.
It's okay, we have time.
So, on November fifteenth, seniors at ACE attended the Financial Reality Fair hosted at Western State University where they participated in a variety of activities that promote financial planning, budgeting, job exploration, salary and taxes. All students were very engaged in the numerous activities that were offered, which provided them a real sense of reality of what life is like living independently. On Tuesday, November twenty-second, ACE hosted its annual Thanksgiving celebration for the community. Over four hundred people attended, including past principals, Olo and I, and members of our school, community and city. Once again, it was a huge success and continues to be one of our nicest traditions offered at ACE. Due to weather conditions, our breakfast in Santa was canceled, which is really sad because we had all our decorations put up. On Monday, November twenty-eighth, seniors participated in a financial aid night hosted in Anavita Community College where they provided individual assistance in completing a financial aid form as they prepare for life after high school. And first period attendance winners in November participated in a reward ice skating trip at the Danbury Ice Arena on Friday, December second. For many, this was the first time they had ever gone ice skating and it was a great experience for them. ACE students continue to participate in intervention groups in reading and math and are using Icel Learning software program. Our retesting results showed that many students who participated in twice-a-week sessions made growth in respective reading and math area that were concentrated on. Students enrolled in English one attended the Color Purple on Broadway, December twenty-first. Students were reading a novel in their classes and then were treated to the play as a result of a donation made to the school. For many, this was the first time they had ever been to profit or even been to New York City. It was a great trip for all. Incoming DHS students were interviewed this past Saturday for acceptance to ACE for the second semester. We'll be holding additional interviews on Saturday, January twenty-first, and hope to accept fifteen to twenty new students to ACE for the second semester.
Thank you very much.
That's how long.
Interesting. Any questions?
No, I just want to say I did make it to the Thanksgiving celebration, fantastic.
You did?
As always.
Oh, yeah, I saw you guys.
You did?
Yeah.
I saw you scooping ice cream over there.
Oh, yeah, that was a struggle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, no presentation, that's great.
You want one?
Yeah, I mean, I'll take one. Thank you, girls.
You're welcome.
Nice.
Okay, super, super intelligent.
Let me start with the end of mine. As you see above, you did accept the resignation of Kim Doe. She was, she was living in our program for expenses. That dental program will be moving to underneath Civic from the Jim Maloney's programs.
Dental was kind of partnered with the school-based health centers that we have at the Rodney Rogers High School. Kim ran dental at the elementary, so it was like a hygiene program. The program breaks even at best for us. It's not a, not a great fit as far as what we do here every day. Kathy O'Dowd is kind of working with Kim on the program. It's, it's lost money some years, it's broken even others, it's, and also it's really is a better fit for the Jim's group with his medical union and everything else.
We have more time for the elementary.
Yeah, we'll sort of, the same services, better program, and I think it's really, it's better off to be over there. There's additional issues, insurance that we have to pick up and some on our side.
Because I misunderstood, I misunderstood, you did away with the program?
No, we're transferring the program over to Civic, I think, Mr. Maloney. It doesn't, the right hand really isn't, I don't feel, there's not enough expertise that really exists around the dental program right now. Kim ran the program. The program really doesn't make any money, it's revenue at best for us. The goal is to provide the same services point.
Wasn't, when it was established, it wasn't established to make money?
No, I mean, it didn't.
Or was it established to bring dental care to people that needed it?
Correct, but it's, right now, we've had issues with some losses inside the program because not everyone carries insurance, so we turn the service to all those kids.
Right, we know that.
So, we're going to talk to Mr. Maloney, a meeting next week with them to discuss what's going to occur there. There's additional insurance we have to carry, like the malpractice insurance as well. We, and Sal and I speaking about it, it's, it's a better fit underneath them, as long as we have the same level of services that we're getting today, which we feel right now he could do that plus more at the elementarys.
So, he's, he's willing to take it on?
He's willing to take it on, leave the same program, same dentists we have servicing our students. The elementary probably think it actually expand more because he actually also has a mobile, they have a mobile clinic, I guess, they have some conversation on expanding into that. Yeah, we're having a meeting next week.
Where's he gonna, where's he gonna service them now?
They'll still stay, there's a regular dental clinic at Ellsworth, there obviously is inside the school-based health center as well, and there's another one at the Lee Park Avenue.
Now, we've cut back a lot of nurses, there's a lot of billing issues. With Kim leaving, it's a good opportunity for us to jettison the program and maybe even enhance it for our kids, because it may have been on its way out. It was close on its way out two years ago, and we were able to cobble some things together. This is better for our kids with more consistent services, so that's why we're.
Well, this is a surprise for me and I, because I've been sitting on that committee since it started, so that's a surprise I've heard of. And I was wondering when I saw that she was leaving, which came first, that you can review.
So, anyway, that's, that, that should enhance the program and we can save it for our kids, that's.
Yeah, the goal with Civic, clearly going to the meeting next week is to make sure we keep the same level of service. The elementary was the concern, that's a, that's doesn't, that doesn't really break even, and obviously you have to at least break the thing even, so that's, that's, that's the concern we need to have next week.
I'm sorry, you don't want to beat a dead horse, but it was, it was never designed to make money.
No, I know, but I can't lose the money either, and that's the thing, I need to, it's like school lunch, I need to at least break even, you know? I'm not saying that's, that's not the reason to keep the program, no. The other issue too, there's some malpractice insurance that needs to be carried on the dentist that I don't think covered right now is enough.
Well, plus, when this thing started, we got Sue, full-time central office person, we had a lot of other things, just timing is. Well, quite frankly, this goes into the budget, I am looking for ways to, to deliver services with less supervision and, and, and do it so that we can reallocate resources. This is certainly nursing time and other time that we don't, we don't have, no.
I just have a question. Who is, since we've transferred this program over to Mr. Maloney, who is he accountable to? Any part of the game exclusive system?
Well, if.
How, that's my question with being, I'm not forming a plan because I'm so installed too. Who is going to make sure that we have transferred this program over to him, that the kids are going to get what we are expecting them to deliver?
So, who oversees the program?
Well, the liaison to the program will be Kathy, but she'll be a liaison. That's our nurse.
Kathy O'Dowd.
And she's going to be responsible?
She should be a liaison rather than supervising and running and billing, yes. Because Kim, we have no one, no one running it day by day. They'll be running it day by day. Kim's supervision, or the supervisor of that person will come out of Jim Maloney's shop, but Kathy O'Dowd would be the liaison too. I'm sensing a reservation, is there something I'm not saying? I, we, we did this because we felt it would enhance our programming for the kids and also do it much more evenly. I know we're not trying to make money, break even would be great, losing a little bit, but there's a whole billing issue with insurance that we're reconciling that needed to fix. So, you want us to relook at that, just say the word.
I mean, we're.
I don't say it down unless I'm missing something.
I, I think, sorry, sorry.
I just want to, you know.
No, I think what's happened, and, excuse me, Ms. Cooper, I think what's happening is we're finding out for the first time now, and I, I never, I never, I mean, just like, I guess I lay this on the committee, it's something that we're just, that we're just hearing about now, I think maybe you've asked if there's a reservation now after it's done.
Well, it's not done.
Oh, okay, good.
That's why it's on here. I mean, I can see it as more administrative, but, you know, I didn't even know there was a committee that existed. Thought it.
It hasn't been forever because of.
Oh, I just never knew that, you know?
If the committee hasn't been forever, then, you know.
Yeah, how would you know?
I got these people to make these types of decisions and inform us, and that's, that's what's going on. Why, I mean, with that next week, getting information, I'll come back next week.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't do it again.
Because this is way.
That's why it's here for me to talk about.
Because it's all sketchy, right?
Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm, I'll be next week to go.
All right, that's fair. Yeah, I mean, we didn't sign any papers, we're not doing any of that.
My only question was, and my concern is, and I know it wouldn't make, and I know you have the authority to make those decisions, and my only concern is to make sure when we transfer a program like this, that the children, those are the people that's going to be affected, get the results that we want them to get, and who's accountable to who? That's all I want to know. It's, it was your decision, it's done, but again, I, you know, that's my concern.
All right, well, before we do that, we'll check it out and go drill it down some more and come back, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Graduation requirements, we, the current eighth grade class could be under the new twenty-five, so the high school has to update their course selection. We, we're going to make the accommodations, we're going to have to have a policy committee. It really is going to be a regulation change, because you already defined the credits, they've redefined some of the credits and the amount. The policy itself is okay, but we got to change the regs, obviously. There's a performance component that we'd have to work out in detail because it could be very expensive. Just in general, their graduation increase requirement could be anywhere between nine and fourteen FTEs for us. I'm still hoping that they don't, they don't continue doing it in light of the budget situation, but we have to plan accordingly, just because it's going to impact the current eighth grade students. So, we'll have to come back to, we're going to ask for a policy committee on one twenty-five roundful at the end. High school is working on, has been working on the regulations for us, so that's, that's it. The shelter rock module should be ready by Monday, kids should have to buy it.
Yeah, right now, we're putting the insulation up, the door should be installed tomorrow when we are, we're ready to go. The heats are beyond, internet's on, PA's running, we should be go for a CO hopefully either Friday or Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to burn Christmas champagne inside of the non-mall. Yeah.
I heard it looks greatly look great.
Classes that came up out of Georgia, they look pretty nice, actually.
That it's a good fit, that's.
Yeah, yeah, it does, they're, they're.
Fits aesthetically nice, and the, and the, the walkway is enclosed, that's the big thing, it's safe.
Yeah, heated, enclosed, secure. Can I drive to the building?
The budget process timeline?
Budget process, goal's to get a finance meeting coming up, hopefully maybe next week or or thereabouts. I'd like to take and then do a presentation with order the next board meeting, we think, and then obviously, by city charter, it's got to be adopted at the first meeting in February for the mayor's test for the fifteen. Sal and I are going to be, we're going to be with Mark today about lobbying efforts and other things, but, you know, as the board knows, we got a cut a quarter of a million over the holiday break. You know, we're starting to pull over to get all the salaries for benefits to help this, it's going to be a messy request, I mean, we're not going to know anything in a sense till, when you done, Michael, June fourth, Wednesday? Seven. That's when we'll probably know what the budget actually looks like, by the time it's all done up there.
Looked at the mayor today, and the approach is going to be just to go through a normal process, you know, as an annual. We know what the salaries, you know, that's the eighty-two percent of the budget, we know what our commitments are, we're getting our monthly now for insurance, we have kind of an idea for that. Whatever happens in June, if we have to revisit it, then revisit it. Making cutbacks now, not a good idea, and he agreed, so we're just going to go with our budget presented as the board approves, and then he'll do his thing and we'll see what happens at this point. We, on substitutes, in case you're here, I just want to, we are having a hard time with subs in the district. The flu has hit us this week particularly. We had over a hundred people out, we had to cancel a lot of PD work, but that, it's more than that. We have, our professional development work has been the embedded work, which means teachers stay in school, we get substitutes, the subs go in the classroom, teachers are there during the day and they do their PD work. It just seems that we cannot keep up with all the work that we're asking everyone to do. We have math program, we have the rural English program, I'm sorry, our, our reading program has changed, so there's a lot of work, and you know, the board still gave us that one hour a week, twice dismissal, it's better than nothing, but it has not helped us to the point where we can do all the work. So, we've had to put a moratorium like today on, on a lot of that work. So, we've, I've signed a committee to work out some kind of a system. I don't think we can do anything this year, it's going to have to limp along, but for next year, the board may have to consider some, something, some changes, because we cannot do the work. We have a hundred eighty-six days, school days, a hundred eighty days of going to kids, we have four PD days that we have for teachers, and that's all we have other than those Tuesdays. And we just can't keep subbing people in, because what's happening, they're taking a speech teacher, social worker, student, people should be working with kids or in classrooms because there's nobody watching in classrooms, and it's just not working. We met with the commissioner last Friday, and to her credit, I mean, she didn't realize there's a problem. All the Alliance districts are having the same problems with subs, because we're doing the work the same way, to try to come up with a way of certifying more substitute teachers in the state. Right now, need a four-year degree in order to be considered as a sub. There is a procedure for a high school diploma and associate's degree, and they can expand that, and we can open up with some training, some more folks available to do subbing. I don't know if you want to comment.
How many, uh, do we have in the sub pool right now?
About two hundred. Probably seventy-five of those also sub in surrounding districts, because I can see them as participating in multiple places at the same time. For example, today, like Dr. Saad said, we had a hundred, almost a hundred teachers out of the hill, and then you layer onto that, you know, thirty or forty additional subs to cover meetings, grade level meetings, professional development, and that's where when we hit that hundred and ten, hundred and fifteen number, we start to really have a problem. The, you'll remember, you're in and you're out. Two, I always do come and tell you that we pull a lot of our high flyers, the folks that really do a lot of work in the sub pool, to be interventionist for a hundred days, to do a long-term sub assignment, so we drain the pool fairly regularly with these people who are happy to have more consistent work, so that also causes it, causes it to fluctuate. So, one of the things that I've been doing this week is really looking at the data in anticipation of this meeting next week, looking at how much of this district-wide meeting activity we've been doing for the last two years by semester, so, you know, fall and spring, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, and sixteen, seventeen. Our, the size of our sub pool has remained fairly consistent, the usage of that pool has been fairly consistent, so we're looking at kind of whether there are any trends there to see if we can find other ways to kind of tap into the district reasons why folks are out, because these episodic subs, we really do need for, you know, flu, and, and this is our really busy sick time right now.
Sorry, you'll be hearing more about that. It is, it is a problem for us.
Could I just ask a question, and I know, I think you do, do we use any of our old retired?
Oh, definitely, definitely. In fact, I was just telling Dr. Saad, I had this wonderful specialist preschool teacher who retired in December, right before the break, and she came in to turn in her laptop, and I took her by the hand and I brought her into Melissa Bank and I said, "Put her in the sub pool, let's make sure she can come back and sub." So, normally time is in front of her. But, yeah, we do, there's a very, there's very rare occasions when we wouldn't, and it would typically be people that we may have had issues with.
Okay.
But, always, and it really is as simple as shooting an email to me or to Melissa Bank. Always our retired teachers, always.
Just so the board knows, you raised the price, it's not a mountain of money.
No.
We do, I mean, that, that's just not the, that's not the issue, it's not where, other than, if they're down, even Fairbrook County, some of it's up at one twenty-five, but around here, we're pretty much at the high end, and if someone's with us for sixty days or any.
Forty days, they go to the certified rate if they're certified, two sixty-one.
Two sixty-one a day, so, you know, we've been able to treat everybody fairly, and if it's a shortage area, we'll give them a little bit more, we just can't, so, so I know we're working on that, just so you know.
Discussion discussion?
Yeah, I should have dental discussion. The YNCCS, you may have heard that the state was twenty-nine million dollars short, and they notified all of the school, the school district during the holiday that they were going to be reduced in their CCS. The commissioner advocated not to reduce our Alliance folks any more than two hundred fifty thousand. He's, he's looked at the paper, all of them received no more than two fifty. Some of the districts, for example, Greenwich, and Greenwich had one point two million dollars reduction.
Correct.
You know, Darien had nine hundred thousand reduction.
No more than four.
So, you know, although it's, it's a lot, it could have been a lot worse. We've been able to mitigate it because we had a few staff that we were not able to hire our PSYOP coaches.
PSYOP.
So, with that, we're just not going to fill those positions, and there's about another amount, about a hundred thousand in purchasing of some supplies that we're just going to have to put off and not do. Something should happen towards the end, and it does, but the good news, we don't have to lay anybody off.
There's two FTEs PSYOP should are in the grant right now, we'll open those two.
And the money has to come out of the grant, can't come out of the ECS money to the municipality. So, I'm just, so, next year is a hope, as I said before, it's a home of the game, but right now, maybe reduce that two fifty. But I did ask the commissioner, does she expect this to be reduced anymore? She said no, because what happened here, in the, at the end of the session, when they did the implementer bill, they set a reg in the law that permitted OPM to activate it if there was an X amount of money that would be short in the biennial budget, he had the right to execute that, and that's what he did. The only way that can change would be if the legislators go back and change the law. So, he just notified the commissioner that he was going to operationalize that, and that's what happened. She knew two days before we did, and, so, I, I don't know what they meant next year. It's not in the new biennial, they can put it in, they have to put it in each time, it's not something that's existing in state law, it's put in at towards the end of the session each time, so.
In that same vein, we still don't have a final magnitude grant budget either, that's another one outstanding, there's a six point five percent supposed reduction in that the state has not firmed up that grant either.
That's why I'm worried we could lose money.
We hadn't funded, we got one point three million, so they've shorted us now half a million. We assume that six percent's come out of that half a million, but I talked to them yesterday, they still won't know if this was going to be even fair.
The other thing here, it says state RFPs for charter school. For about four years, it's been a moratorium on charter schools. However, with all the shortage of all the money, the State Department has put out RFPs for charter schools. So, what I'm asking the board to consider for me is I, I think it would be prudent on our part to seriously think about putting in an application for a charter school. The way a local charter, there is a provision within the law, the way the law works now, if there's a group that wants to go and apply for an RFP for a charter in Danbury, they can do so without your permission, and go right to the state board. We have nothing to say about it, right? Now, and, and there are arguments on both sides, they say, well, it doesn't cost you any money, but let me explain something to you. There's only so much money. That money is dispersed between all of the funding systems, of which the charter is one of them. So, the charter's taking money out of that, out of that. We, as a school system, if a charter should come into town, we have, you have to provide transportation, just as you do with the Pearl Fields, you have to provide nursing services, just as you do with the other Pearl Fields. We have to do assessments for special education, so there are related costs that you need to be concerned about. The charter minimum, a local charter minimum, requires your permission, because you would have to approve it, it's not something I can do without, or anyone can do without your permission. But, it goes, there is money for it, is about, you could have it from three hundred But it goes, there is money for it, is about, you could have it from three hundred to three hundred twenty-five students. There's, and this is what I'm trying to feather out because I haven't done it. It's either three thousand per student or, or up to eleven thousand per student. And that would come to, come to the school system. In addition, there's planning money, in addition, there's money for bricks and mortar if we need to do something at this point. My guess is they'll get to the end and they probably won't be able to fund it. But we do have, we do, we are going, we can use the space. We're gonna be looking for space. I say if we don't put our oars in the water, we don't have a chance to get that money. We could bring a few million dollars in, we could work with our curriculum, and I think we'd be better off. The only way this would work, you may recall, those of you on the board a few years ago, there was a call to compact school. Compact school is, is a, is a, under the law, you're permitted to enter into an agreement with the teachers union. And have conversation with the teachers union, they're in full agreement for this, where the board and the union would enter in a compact. And the way the compact worked in the past, still have to negotiate it, but permit you as the board to say, these are the policies we expect you to implement regarding certification and safety. The, we would, the union would say, okay, other than salary and benefits, the rest of the contract is open. What does that mean? That means they can raise funds, that means they can work on Saturdays, that means they can extend the school day, they can run all of these things outside the norm, if the compact provides that. And they're willing to have that conversation. So I think it's a smart thing. The other thing I will say to you, the, the schools that are helpful are those that are, that are almost twenty-four seven. You know, there are a few groups in town that want to provide a charter, they would like to apply for a charter. The school I envision is one that is, is gonna be seven to eight o'clock. It'll open before school, they'll have school, they'll have after-school parenting activities and the kids will be there getting interventions and support. And have what they call a community school model. The C E A has been supporting a community model, is one in, in Boston that's running, is running successfully. They're enthusiastic about it. I've approached Jim Maloney because he has the resources for the after-school work. He was one of the, I guess, interested parties to provide a charter. He has an interest to talk with us, the union has an interest to talk with us. I talked to the mayor, the mayor feels, as I do, the money as far as, there has been another group looking at it. And that's fine, the other group could put in their application, I don't begrudge it. But I feel as though if I don't advise the board in this way, then if we do get a charter, you're gonna lose resources. Not only that, what happens with, generally with charters, the most motivated parents, the most motivated students seem to migrate to those activities. And, you know, I like to keep it in our families best I can, so. I'm not putting in an application. The application is out, it's not due to July. Just think about it, we'll talk about it next time. I don't have a lot of particulars, other than it came out during, during the same time we were notified about a quarter of a million dollars. So, but we have time, but you do have your teachers who are interested. Seems that the town is interested, Jim is interested, and we're interested to do it because we could do some things differently. So, I just put that up.
Is it possible to take our magnet school from the charter school? Because we're losing, we're losing, you know, people, obviously, students. The surrounding districts can't send students that they don't have, so is it possible that we could use that building?
I don't know. I'd have to look at the RFPs. My guess is they would expect to have a, a different program.
Well, you could change the program.
Then they'd be changing me, the parents would be changing me right now. I guarantee you that. I mean, if you apply for a charter, we thought, is A C a charter? That's, you could do something like that.
Yeah.
That makes some sense, you know. There already has a lot of the tenants of that. Trouble is, your growth is at the elementary. You know, I'm also keeping an eye on how I'm gonna handle my, my increase of population going from seven twenty to nine hundred.
Yeah.
And, you know, we need help there. So this is a way of helping us down there. The answer, I'd have to look into it, I don't know. I don't know how they would look at that, taking current school, reorganizing it. We already get money for it, they'd say. We already receive-
Seventy-six hundred students.
Students, so.
Out of town, three thousand.
What we're doing there, by the way, is trying to sunset it so we're not harmed with the enrollment. So we already get money for that. So that might not be the best choice for us to do it. I mean, you know, this, this, I mean, we're just talking about it. There's space issues, obviously, that we'd have to look at. There are a lot of other things that we'd have to consider, but I think to stand by and just not take advantage of possible resources wouldn't be the best for us.
So maybe if you get, like, some more information, we could do maybe like a little workshop on it.
Yeah. Get the RFPs that just came out.
Just to take a look at it and see, you know, what you, yeah, exactly, exactly.
No, that's good. I didn't want to do anything without first at least getting a sense that it's okay to take a look at. Because it is, okay, good. So anyway, then we'll have a workshop and we'll, and we'll get that, thank you. Jim is on our side, the town's on his side, we're all in this together for the kids.
Jim's on his own side.
Well, get it over with.
So I just want to point to be, if Jim is on our side and we put in the application and I know there's another group, and we put in the application, this other group I know has been around for close to three years now, so.
Let me say it this way, guys. Jim has not put an application in. His interest would be with ours.
Okay.
He would, pardon me, he would be part of our program. It would be, it would be, it would be, it would be a program made up of, of city services, school, Department of Education, our services, all right, and municipal services. So that would be, that's what the community school is made up of. So he would be part of that. That element of the providing services would come in from his organization. Our organization would provide the teaching and learning pieces, at least conceptually. The big thing is the compact with the teachers.
Things are great ideas and I like ideas, but we have to look beyond what we're doing there. And the number are rising, so, and the money is not there. The state seems to be, we're gonna push charter schools here in Danbury. So, you know, why not take advantage of it?
At least talk to the-
But I think parents, you know, once we find out information, parents really need to understand that children are going to a charter school. Because there's some negative, I've been to several meetings with this one group and I think there's a little bit of negative words out there that people are using concerning charter schools.
Yeah. The board's always wanted choice for parents. And that's why we have the middle school mag, we have the, so this, this aligns with that idea. But it is, there's only one district charter in the state and that's, I told you, it's in the eastern part of the state, was approved, starts with a W, Win-Dom. And it's run by one of the, like, our head connections. It's not run by the school system, but that's the only local one. We would be the second one. If it comes to fruition.
Eileen, you got a question?
I just wanted to, just to clarify something. You said that the union is on board.
The union is very interested.
Okay, so the teachers in the school will be members of the union?
Yeah. When I say the union, well, it'd be the administrative union we'd have to talk with.
I agree, yeah.
You're right. But the, the C E A is very, very interested. I mean, since the, they've been, we, we did talk briefly about it last year a little bit and then it went away. But damn it, it's a reality. I talked to Tom Kennedy. He spoke with our leadership here. They talked to their, their executives in Hartford. This wasn't an easy thing to come by, for me to even say this to you tonight. They came back to me last week, right after it happened, and said, "We're interested." So, I mean, you know, the devil's in the details, right? With the compact and all that. But there's an opportunity here to talk.
Any other questions?
I, I need more information because I'm struggling, I'm struggling with the logic here because we were just told that the state was short twenty million dollars. They cannot fund their existing commitments, but all of a sudden, there's a bucket of money for a charter school?
Probably from the same bucket.
You're right.
I'm sorry if I'm introducing logic into the conversation, but to me, it's kind of like, you can't pay the bills you have now, but somehow there's this secret Swiss account.
It's the same government that funds Head Start so well, okay?
Well, I think it's a-
I just want, my concern, I don't wanna get, have Danbury residents and taxpayers put on the hook for something that was promised and then the state drops the ball.
Right.
So I, okay.
Oh, yeah.
I'm all for growing the space.
I think, I think you're exact, I mean, those-
I need more.
You're exact, when I asked the commissioner their question, is how can you possibly, compared it exactly what you said. She said it's politics.
Yes.
I'm gonna tell you, exactly, it's something that, right. It, they understand, nobody with any sense can figure, I only have this amount of money and I'm taking this much away now, now I'm gonna expand, I'm gonna expand what I'm gonna use it for. It didn't make any sense. And it was plain and simple. It's something that, some agreements were made and it happened. All I'm saying is that we ought to consider. And you're right, that's a concern.
I'm not saying no. I think we should obviously consider if there's money to be had, we should, you know, try to get our unfair share. But at the same time, I'm listening to, there's not enough to pay the existing commitments, but here we're gonna give you commitments on this other side. And I'm very interested to see how this new legislature figures this out.
You're right.
Well, and, and my, and my two chances, I've watched, I've read about it, I've been watching it for years. I've watched it destroy entire school systems. And because the parents kick in, and the parents support it, it's called education for hire, is what it's called. For, for profit, I'm sorry, education for profit. And then after that happens, that you and she and people sitting on this table are that quality, have left that, their money, and their kids are at school, they're not supporting any more, so they're private school systems now, supporting it the way it supports the buy-and-buy, the Pearl Field schools and the class schools, okay? It then becomes another private school, which drains on the kids that are stuck going to the different private schools. Got it?
No, I, I, I agree, I think we just need-
And I have the research to back that up.
To do a workshop on it, to find out the information before we can, you know, make a decision.
Yeah.
So let's put that together.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not a decision that's made overnight.
So anyway, we'll, we'll shake it out and do the pros and cons. Modern band music, what we're doing, we've been sitting down with the band folks. There has been some issues with equipment, signing up, numbers declining over here. So we, we put together a plan. We're working with them now. I'm just letting you know because I, I seem to go somewhere and someone tugs at me and says, "Are you gonna buy any instruments for the kids?" "Yeah," you know, "tell me what it is." So we sat down and we think we have a plan that's not only buying stuff, but how can we build a program, how we can continue to support the program. Youngsters need some options in how they go through their course selections. You know, somebody says, "Oh, yeah, you can take band and the kids can't because they're committed to other things." So the high school's looking at, they have some auditing and some of the scheduling with labs where they have open periods, where the kids do not have to go to study or they can go to lab. Maybe that could be the band and get credit for it. So they're, they're doing some things. So we're working on some things. We're looking at some, the pros and cons of leasing. Those things are pretty expensive, particularly the band instruments.
So this draft that you have in here, sir, this is just your draft?
It's not my draft, it's the department's draft about things.
The art music department's draft or?
Yeah.
Oh, because I thought this was already placed in.
Which means that the draft these were working on. Because, you know, I don't have any money. But aside from the money, there are, there are structural things that have to be changed. Those things are being worked on now, with course selections, arrangements with different classes. That will happen because the kids didn't have enough to get in. Getting in means we've gotta buy more stuff, which is what we gotta work on.
Yeah, yeah.
The kids, the kids, that's their line thing, always existed, especially, especially they said they are in music programs. And those are always your performing kids who always never have study halls. But they've always managed to do it and they've managed to play soccer and everything else and have all of their classes and attend again. What, what is the problem now?
They don't want to. But, I mean, I have the same question. The kids do not want to put that kind of time into it right now. The requirements, the priorities are different. And, but I think there are things that can be done structurally to put the kids in position to do it. For example, we have, one of the middle schools has a handful of kids in band and the other one has a hundred and fifty of them. You know, we're trying to figure out what's going on in those schools. We're finding out that if you rent some equipment, you can rent it for sixty days, right? For twenty bucks, you have to sixty a day, goes up to two hundred fifty depending on the instrument. So the kids are dropping out. So we're looking at providing school equipment for them, getting resources for them. So the kids have a chance to figure out if they wanna stay in. So there's, there's structural things that we need to do to help if we're gonna build the band. Not just by choice that, and yeah, they can always do it. But there are courses up at the high school now, the way they're structured, much differently. The kids don't really have the time. And then there's some kids that are opening in schedules that they can accommodate if the band folks permit them to participate in the band. So they're working those things out. They're working those things out. And hopefully, in four or five years, the band will, you know, right now I went to a competition and had thirty-nine kids in. You know, Brookfield had, what, a hundred and twenty kids? And there are a lot of small, and, you know, programs are important, but I think we just need to support the people in the program better. So that's what that is, this is basically.
Oh, okay, it's fine, ready?
That's a blueprint, yeah, it's a blueprint to try to get better, to see if that helps. You have a pattern about the lease?
We're gonna look at the equipment and obviously the uniforms, they're issued in a sense. The setup now are heavy wool uniforms and eighty, ninety, whether in summer in particular, there's really not a, a winter and spring uniform, if you will. There's, there's a lot of things need to be, you know. I mean, as everyone knows, it's expensive. And the band, and the band days put in a small fortune on their own side. It's not a case of, that, you know.
Fifty-five thousand.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, well, as I was saying, I met with them like a couple of years ago and it's like, wow, there's a small fortune came in for that. And they still need additional funds to support the program. So it's, you know, they rent vans to go place and different stuff they're looking at. But yeah, the equipment and obviously uniforms are both pretty pricey.
Bill, you have anything? You were in that meeting with me.
The, the only other thing to mention is that thanks to work that Joe Russell Bender did, there's a program called Little Kids Rock and it's, it's, it is a win-win for us. And part of that draft includes it, which says, they're trying across the country to grow band programs. So they will give us free band equipment. They'll help us write curriculum or get us curriculum from other award-winning programs. And they'll do professional development for our teachers for free. The only thing they ask in return is that we provide them space at no cost to them to come and do work, which you can't lose on that one. So this, we see this very much as a value add. We add a substantive amount of musical thing to our district.
So, keep you in touch on that, all right?
Okay.
Thank you.
It was exciting, man.
Board chairperson, you're cool. Has everyone seen the committee list, E C L list? Everybody's okay with the way it is? Yes? I was saying, put it back in. Because we're locking it in. But if there's any, if there's any changes or there's a big-
I think we have the option to come off or remove ourselves from any committee anytime during the year. So if you don't wanna be in this, just take yourself off.
Agreed. So yeah, if there's not, but this is kinda what the response was after Deb sent it out. So we're gonna stick with this for now. Okay, good, yeah? I just have a couple of things, some housekeeping things. Yeah, so, yeah, thank you. I'm so glad you're here, Stowe, thank you.
Well, there's, um, times you'll think.
No, is there too many?
Six?
Have any?
Is that too many? No, six on a committee. Is that too many?
No, it's the ideal is not four. Consider the four, you really want us to have.
You have six, yeah.
Okay, so who, who wants to, who wants to jump off then?
Why are we here?
Do our tendency valuation. Do our tendency valuation.
Yeah, bad people, I guess.
Yeah, that would be.
They're not committee, because they are, they are anyway.
Alright, Eileen, you're, you're on four here. Do you wanna jump off the superintendent's valuation?
Sure.
Okay, you got stats, you got stats, let's stack deck it. Okay. So now, that, that tells me all that, that change?
Yeah, and that's only five.
The numbers.
You got it.
And then you have five on policy, two on negotiation, one on, one, three, three, four, five, one, two, three.
I think there's some, so we can.
Okay, great. Thank you, Kathy. I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you're here, too. Okay, a cou- couple of things. A couple of weeks ago, I met with the cabinet, and we went over a couple of things, just some housekeeping stuff. Going forward, we're gonna be getting presentations ahead of time. So we can look at it and have some time to spend with it, some questions to, you know, help, help the presentation, you know, be more productive when we do it, so we know what's going on. Also, a lot of times with public participation or an executive session, you know, something comes up in that, we discuss it, they hear about it, but we never hear what happens after, so. Going forward, we're gonna be updated on stuff like that, if there's an issue with the, with the parent, or something we talk about. They're gonna update us on what the outcome was of, you know, the public participation or an executive session. Also, for committees, we're gonna, when we meet first time for the committee, we're gonna vote for the chairperson at that time. As per the bylaws of the board event, so. We're just gonna vote for that person the first time, right, because first time of that meeting. Also, the school emails. Deb Warner is gonna be sending everything from now on just into your, your Danbury school email. More personal emails, just because it's, you know, everything's on the school. So if you don't check them as frequently, check them a little more frequently. And that's, and that's about it, that's about it so far, just wanna let you guys know that. And we're looking to have a policy committee meeting on January twenty-fifth at six P M. Is that good for, it's before, before the, the meeting? Phil, Phil, it'll be there for that meeting. Is that good for policy meetings? Eileen, Michael Ferguson, Richard Holley, Dana Schrader, Kathy Baller. Anything for you guys?
We're having a policy meeting right before the next.
Policy meeting.
Can I call it in from Nashville?
Ja- January twenty-fifth, six P M.
Oh, I'm jealous.
Okay, we'll say, so Dave's in, ah. That's okay.
We don't have a schedule.
What's that?
Just five, I'm sure.
Right, so you're good? You're three, okay. So everybody's good?
Yep.
Okay.
Got it.
I'll reach out to, to Rich. Alright, let's see, what else, what else? Having fun, okay. Any board reports, communication for anybody, any PTO stuff?
What time is that policy meeting?
We'll do six-thirty, we'll be there.
Can I have it for, for six, just in case?
Okay, I was at Millridge Primary PTO meeting last night, I didn't have time.
You can sit up there, I'll.
It was, it was actually a fairly well-attended PTO meeting. Dr. Cronin explained, as I'm sure everyone's aware right now, the flooding that happens the Tuesday morning, we returned from break. It happens that one of my kids was in a classroom that was affected by this, and he's been happy because they have their homework for a week now. And they're, but I believe they're moving in this week, the teachers have been moving back, they've had.
Should be in.
Everybody's come in, make sure there's no mold, all everything's been dried out, nothing, no personal items were lost. I thought they handled it very well, and the parents that were there last night were very happy with the explanation they received, and I thought Dr. Cronin communicated it very well. So there has been a little bit of, you know, and, you know, this, this settlement there for a little while, but this week should be the end of it. And they're doing the fundraiser again this year, the Apex fundraiser, they're gonna do that. And they're trying to do it at the gym at West Side instead of Millridge, so they're gonna do that. Netflix something, it's a great fundraiser, because the kids, I think they get, donations per lap they run. And that was a huge hit last year. So, can you close on that? That's it.
Anybody else? Any news? So we have a motion to.
Before, before you, real quick, when we sent out the notices concerning any committee meeting this, this year, is it possible that, that the notes just don't go out to the committee members, that just go out to all the board members?
Oh, yeah, typically does, I, I always get.
Just committee members, we want it to go to all board members. And the last thing is, if you're home Monday, and you don't have anything to do, I invite you over to New York Baptist Church. I am working with my pastor. Every year, we put on a poem for God, Not Good to King, and our Danbury High School band has been performing for the last two years. And I am happy that they're coming again on Monday, and the program stops at ten o'clock.
Anything else? So we, we do have an executive session, so we need a motion to.
Does the Board of Education convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing a confidential personnel matter regarding the selection of the Director of Student Services?
Second.
Secretary of Defense, Dana Truitt. Yeah, actually, we have. Any polls?